Board of Education to Order at 7:02 PM. I'd like to remind everyone, all those watching and participating, to kindly mute your microphone at this time. This evening, to find Dr. Bud, there he is, okay. This evening, I am delighted to introduce Dr. Jonathan Bud and our SCASSA Student Award recipient Grace Millard, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance for tonight. Welcome, Grace, and thank you.
Thank you, and I'll get out of Grace's way in just a moment. But I want to commend for the Board of Education and the entire community this evening's leader of the Pledge of Allegiance, Grace Millard, who is one of this year's South Central Area Superintendent's Association Student Recognition Award winners. And I'm going to move out of the way, and Grace will lead the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would invite you to join with her in reciting.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Grace, thank you so much. Dr. Bud?
Yes, I'd like to say that each year, each local superintendent is able to honor a small number of sixth-grade students who have gone above and beyond in three categories. First, community service and service to others; second, academic prowess; and third, leadership to the school community. This year, over three dozen nominations of Beecher sixth graders were received, and so the selection committee faced a significant challenge. However, as you will see tonight and at the upcoming board meetings as the award winners are recognized, these particular sixth graders rose to the top. I'd like to tell you a little bit about Grace Millard in her own words. Grace wrote this: Grace Millard may be young, at just 11 years old, but she has many big ideas and ambitions that she hasn't waited to get started on. She started her own class newspaper almost two and a half years ago. Its mission: to encourage creativity, confidence, community, and an open forum for peers to share and express ideas. Many of Grace's classmates have contributed a diverse range of articles, from humorous stories of talking animals to serious topics regarding national and political issues to education columns such as taxes in Connecticut. Grace has many passions: history, global culture, climate change, and social issues, just to name a few. She believes that God put her here in this world, believe it better than she found it. Since she wants to make the world a better place, she tries to do all that she can to build a better community in little ways. For example, co-leading a girls' church group for people her age to come together in Christ, or giving her all to be a role model for younger people like her little brother, or volunteering, whether that be in class or at the nursery ministry. I'd like you all, everybody, to please join me in congratulating Grace for being one of this year's recipients of the SCASSA Award. Grace is going to say a few words to us, but I first would also like to call up so you could see them on camera, Grace's parents. We have Mr. Robert Millard and Ms. Hun Millards. If you stand right next to Grace, we'll see the whole family there. And we all know that students are the beneficiaries of the great families and all the great adults who interact with them in their years growing up. So when we give an award to a student, it's to that student, but it's also to everything that's influenced that student along the way. So Grace, you do want to say a few words, I think, and I'm going to move it just a little closer to you so that the audio is excellent. All right? Go right ahead.
I definitely agree with the pastor that the people who influence me are to be credited for everything that I achieve, and I want to thank you all for listening, but also I want to thank Beecher Road School for just being the great community and the kind community that I was able to grow.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Grace. We're clapping here in this room, and I can see they are in home as well. Thank you very much, and thank you, Ms. Piazek, for letting us say a few words this evening.
My pleasure, and congratulations again, Grace. You are a delight and a credit to Beecher Road School. I was lucky enough to be able to share some time with Grace tonight before the meeting began, and it was an absolute pleasure. So I'm very happy to have had that opportunity this evening, Dr. Bud. Dr. Bud, do you want to take a moment recess so that you can move your location?
Forty-five seconds, we'll change location. Just a minute.
Okay. We'll play like the Jeopardy music or something while we wait for Dr. Bud to run across the hall. So the next item on the agenda is the recognition of QVHD personnel and Beecher Road School And I am going to turn the microphone over to Dr. Bud in just one moment, but I did want to take a moment myself to just extend the thanks to that group of individuals who has so helped us this year and have been such a support to our Beecher community. So, Dr. Bud, I know you have some things you'd like to say as well.
Absolutely. This recognition was a highly significant one for all of us to put on the agenda, and we're recognizing QVHD personnel this evening, including but not limited to Karen Walujewicz and Elizabeth Matouska, as well as our Beecher nurses, Ashling Fagan, Connie Arnold, Debbie Criscuolo, and Sammy Merritt, for their very significant work in the past three weeks in organizing a vaccination initiative that has resulted in 100% of available and interested Beecher staff receiving their first COVID-19 vaccine doses. And amidst numerous other responsibilities in the Woodbridge community and beyond, QVHD staff have been considerate, responsive, and highly concerned about the ongoing concerns of our educators to be vaccinated as soon as possible. And then our nurses, Ashling, Connie, Debbie, Sammy, they have been first-line agents every day to support our staff this school year. And when vaccination was upon us, they assumed responsibility for scheduling without delay. So it's very easy to add them for recognition on the agenda tonight. Such an honor to work with such dedicated professionals, both at QVHD and in our own Beecher Road School. And I asked the board to join me in commending them for their fine service, truly above and beyond the call of duty. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all so much for your contributions to our community. Next on the agenda is Board Member Appreciation. There's a lot of people being honored tonight. So I would, I'm happy to introduce to the audience, viewing audience this evening, the Honorable Beth Heller, the First Select Person of Woodbridge, Connecticut. Beth, we're happy to have you here this evening.
It is my honor to join you tonight. I hope you can all hear me. Thumbs up. Yes? And what is the sound of one hand clapping? You know, that's, can't hear each other. It's so crazy. Anyway, so I have an award, a proclamation actually, for the Board of Education members, which I would, hope you would indulge me to read, because we in the town are so proud of our staff and our faculty at Beecher Road School, of course, but 100% the Board of Education members are who we're honoring right now. So I will begin. Let's see. Whereas, an excellent public school system is vital to the quality of life in this community and fundamental to preserving a strong democratic society now and in the future. And public schools are being held to higher standards of accountability than ever before at both the state and federal levels. And whereas, the members of the Woodbridge Board of Education represent an invaluable resource in this community as local decision-makers responding to the challenges of assuring our school meets these higher standards. And these school board members must formulate policies to assure that all children learn to their fullest potential. And whereas, these board members continually strive for improvement and progress with an understanding of the need for commitment to the highest standards of student achievement and are working diligently to assure that our young people are educated and prepared for the future. And whereas, the men and women elected to these positions deserve recognition and thanks for their countless hours of volunteer service to public education and the children of our community. Now therefore, the Woodbridge Board of Selectmen and the Woodbridge School District thank all the members of the Woodbridge Board of Education for their tireless and devoted service to our children, our schools, and our community, and urge all residents of our community to join us in expressing appreciation to these exemplary public servants and hereby designate March 15, 2021, as School Board Member Day. Thank you. And I guess you have some, normally I would come to and give everybody a hug and give out gifts, but here we are in COVID land, so I guess you have some.
Good to you, Beth.
Virtual hugs to everybody. Congratulations. You well deserved. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and thank you for coming this evening to speak to the entire board. I have to say that it really is an honor for me to serve with eight other very, very dedicated people who care so much about the children in Woodbridge and the staff and the faculty at Beecher Road School. So I extend my thanks to the eight of you who shared the chair at the table with me. Thank you. So, Dr. Bud, I don't know if you have a few words to say or if you want me to do something, but I'm ready.
Yes, I mean, you have a representative gift there in a moment to open, but I will add that the work the public sees is just the tip of the iceberg. And Ms. Piazek, Ms. Shavers, Ms. Genovese, Mr. Cowan, Mr. Hughes, Ms. Ferrante Fernandez, Dr. Ross, Dr. Strampler, Dr. Townsend, spent untold hours outside of board meetings, attending committee meetings, advising the superintendent, and listening to the residents of Woodbridge. So I join with First Selectman Heller this evening. I'm thanking you earnestly for what you do. And we do offer you a small token of appreciation from the Woodbridge School District, and Lynn is modeling the opening of the gift now, not to spoil it for the rest of you, because we will have you pick these up or we will deliver it, but let's see, Lynn, what they would be experiencing right now if they were all here.
Box number one.
I believe there's only one box, but yes, very good. What does it say, Ms. Piazek?
Oh, it says, "Thank you, merci, gracias, danke," and a lot of other languages that I cannot speak.
Perfect, perfect, and we will be able to get all of you one very, very soon. Thank you for all that you do, and I know you can put that to good use right away. Thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Bud, and again, Beth, thank you. We're moving on to 1.6 on the agenda, correspondence. Ms. Genovese, do we have any correspondence this evening?
No correspondence from Ms. Monfils.
Thank you. 1.7, Public Comment. If you have public comment to make this evening, would you raise your hand in the...
Lynn, there's Ruchi who would like to make a public comment.
Okay, so, so, Ruchi, if you give me a minute, I'm going to read the official statement. The Board welcomes public participation and is appreciative of the feedback we receive from the community, whether it is through letters or public comment at meetings. The input is valued and helps inform our decision-making. We ask for all feedback to be offered in a respectful and courteous manner. Our administrators, teachers, and staff members are always striving to provide the best educational experience for all students. Please continue to partner with us by sharing concerns and suggestions so that we can meet the needs of our community in the best way we can. If you are making a public comment at tonight's meeting, please be aware that the Board will not respond to any comments made during the public comment period except to clarify issues. We will take into consideration your comments, and when appropriate, district administration will follow up with you at a later point in time. We ask that speakers limit their comments to three minutes. And normally, Mr. Cowan, you serve as our special timekeeper, so I'm going to ask you to do that again this evening. Thank you. Ruchi, you're on.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, everyone. So my name is Ruchi Jin, and I have two kids at Beecher. I want to take this opportunity to introduce you all to a new Beecher community group that I have created and named as Beecher Club. So as we mark an anniversary to this unforgettable year that was full of sufferings, I felt it was important to appreciate what we gained in this year and what we still have in order to move forward. And the two key things, in my opinion, which were indispensable, were community and technology. And Beecher Club is a brainchild of these thoughts. An idea is to explore the talents, passions, or skills which we have within our community and expose our kids to those talents. So this will result definitely in an enriching environment for the students and in turn build a stronger community within Beecher. This is going to be during after-school hours in evening conducted via virtual platform, and the frequency will really depend upon the volunteer speakers, which will be from the Beecher community, and that includes parents, teachers, staff, administration, kids, whoever wants to speak, grandparents, siblings. But generally, the frequency would be one to four a month, so maximum once a week. So with this introduction, I would like to invite you all and also urge all the community to participate or join hands with me and volunteer for this program. And the beauty of this program is that it doesn't really need a whole lot of volunteer hours, as like we always worry, right? Volunteer means hundreds of hours. It just needs one-hour seminar from you guys on the topic of your choice, your passion, and obviously the preparation for that seminar. And just to clarify that the talks will be targeted to the kids or to the students, but adults are welcome to attend. And due to privacy and security issues, I will be sending the Zoom links only via email. So if anyone is interested, they can email me at BeecherClub@gmail.com. And there is no small or big topic for this club as far as we are refraining from religious and political party-specific topics. So please help me spread the word and also consider volunteering. And I'm happy to announce that my March calendar is already full, and we kick off the seminar or the webinar series tomorrow. And thanks to Jeff Townsend, who is actually present here, and he's one of our board members, for being our first parent volunteer, and he's going to talk tomorrow about family, school, world, the world and COVID-19, from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. And more in March, I have more parent volunteers who are going to talk about. One is going to talk about our journey from Earth to Mars. Another one is going to talk about hiking tips in all four seasons. So I'm already enjoying building this community and talking to so many variety of parents, and I hope some of you will join me too. And again, if you're interested, just send me an email at BeecherClub@gmail.com, and I will be happy to...
You said, can you wrap up in the next 30 seconds?
I'm done. Thanks. Yeah. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you, Ruchi. Any other public comment this evening? Okay, I don't see any. Dr. Bud, before I move on, I think you have something you wanted to add.
I do. I have a mea culpa in that I neglected to mention one of the very excellent QVHD personnel who's on our call this evening. It takes a village, truly a village with this kind of effort. So in addition to Karen Walujewicz and Elizabeth Matouska, I also want to pay special recognition to Alicia Mulvihill, whose expertise, along with all of the other staff from QVHD, has not gone unnoticed. So thank you, Ally, for all of your work.
Thank you, Ally. And thanks for that, Dr. Bud. Moving on to the Consent Agenda, is there anything that the Board wishes to extract from tonight's Consent Agenda?
I wish to extract the policies.
All three, Mr. Cowan?
No, there was one that I don't need to extract.
So could you please tell us which ones you'd like to have extracted?
It was Agenda Item 2.5.
Policy 2131?
No, 211. Sorry, 2131, yes. And, and then 2111?
Equal Employment Opportunity?
Yep, that's it. 2, I guess it's 4118.122. Find this.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, Dan, but I just blanked out for a minute here on screen. You extracted all three of those policies? 2131, 2111? And 411?
Can stay on the Consent Agenda.
4118.112 can stay on the Consent Agenda. Okay, so, I am looking for a motion then to accept the Consent Agenda with the exception of 2.5 and 2.6 on the Agenda, Policy 2131 and Policy 2111. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Dan Cowan, do I have a second? Is there anyone who's seconding that? Okay, we have no second for that motion.
I'd like to, can I make a motion to accept as is, as presented?
You want to make a motion to accept the Consent Agenda as presented?
Yes.
Megan Genovese, do I have a second for that motion? Jeff Townsend, is there any discussion on the motion to accept the Consent Agenda as presented?
I can just say out loud, one thing we did talk about in Policy was that for Policy 2131, Superintendent of Schools, we do have a bit more work to do with that, but we did want to get it out there because it is a new, a totally revamping, that we did all agree was better, but we didn't want to totally exclude what was there before. So we realized we need a little bit of time to work through that, but we wanted it to be present so we can have this for everyone to view, since it relates to Superintendent Valuation, which will be coming up very shortly.
That was, Megan, that's exactly the reason why I wanted to extract it, was to have this conversation, because what we agreed was that we were going to present it without the old policy struck through.
Well, I think...
And extract it with the 27 items as an addendum, and that is not what we received tonight. So that was not what the committee put forward, and that's why I wished to extract it.
So I hear what you're saying. I guess, I think my thought behind that was that we are, we are not, we're coming right back to it next month. We're putting it on the agenda. It will continue to be on the agenda because we all agreed we do want to continue moving forward with it. I realized that it was struck through, and I think the intention was to have the language not struck through, and I hear you on that. But the idea was that we wanted to make sure we had the new language on the table so everyone could have access to that.
Dr. Bud?
You're muted, Dr. Bud.
You're muted, Dr. Bud.
Yeah, thank you, Dan. That was a clerical error. The version the Board should have received tonight should have had those 27 items connected to a 9.0, as we had discussed at Policy Committee, so I take responsibility for that clerical error, and we will get you that version that comes out of the Policy Committee.
Okay, so...
I should likely be able to get that to you by the time we have the exact session, as a matter of fact, tonight.
So just for clarification, for Board members, Policy 2131 should not have pages four, five, and six struck out. So when we accept the Consent Agenda and we accept that policy for 30-day review, it's with those pages not, the text on those pages not struck out?
Right, and essentially, we talked about accepting the new language. We do like it, but the old language had some concrete examples in it that we didn't want to just discard, and we didn't feel like we had enough time to wordsmith that quickly. We wanted to take the time and do it right. So that's why we're going to continue working on that. But again, because we need to have approved the Superintendent Valuation language by April 1st, we won't have time to, we didn't have time to do that before this meeting, so, over a three-day span. So that's why we landed on that, just to make that clear.
Yeah, we're sending you the updated one now.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
As a point of clarification, which pages are you choosing to unstrike?
Marcia, I sent you the, I sent you the attachment again a minute ago. So you'll see the new attachment a minute ago that has the items not struck out. I'm sending it to the Board now. If you can upload it to e-meeting, then we'd have the public have it also.
So I believe, Marcia, that's pages four, five, and six.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion, which is to accept the Consent Agenda as Okay, I'm going to call the roll for that vote. Dr. Strampler? I think you're on mute, Mike. We're voting on accepting the Consent Agenda as presented.
Sorry, I couldn't get off mute here. Yes.
Thank you. Megan Genovese?
Yes.
Lore?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Dr. Townsend? Jeff Hughes?
Yes.
Dr. Ross?
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Cowan?
No.
And, yes, so the motion passes eight to one, Marcia. And, um, yes, so the motion passes eight to one, Marcia. Uh, moving on to number three, reports. Um, PTO update.
Uh, hi, Lynn. That's going to be, uh, I'm going to speak for Joy tonight for our update.
Thank you, Maria. Nice to see you this evening.
You're welcome. Good to see you. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to talk about two events that are happening here in March. We're having a virtual book fair that kicked off today, goes today to the twenty eighth. Uh, Scholastic has an online platform set up, and unlike the in-person book, uh, book fairs, we don't earn any cash revenue, but we do get Scholastic dollars, which we have been using this year to replenish teacher classrooms and bring in some special events. We're able to use those dollars to hire authors, and we've had several author visits already this year. Uh, so that has kicked off today. Two special, uh, events that are go along with the book fair. Uh, this year, traditionally, we had parents come on family night, and they would pick out books that they wanted to donate to their teacher's classroom. And the way that Scholastic's handling that is that there's an e-wallet set up, and parents can donate towards the e-wallet, and those funds will go directly to the teachers, and they can purchase books with, with that money. And then to celebrate the event and bring the community together, we have at least twelve read alouds scheduled that we're going to advertise, and parents and students can get on and hear, um, our administrators and hear our teachers give some read alouds and sort of bring the community together a little bit and bring some excitement to the book fair, even though we can't be in person. We also have our first adult trivia, adult parent trivia night, uh, this Thursday. Uh, the PTO sponsored this completely as a way to bring the community together. Um, it is Thursday from seven to nine, and you can RSVP to Eventbrite, and they will send you a link. It's hosted by the Rock, Paper, Scissors Company, and it should be a really nice evening of everyone getting together. And there's two events coming up in May. We're working on teacher appreciation, and we're also working on Arts Week. And then we have contracted again this year to run a virtual-only Booster-Thon. That Booster-Thon is going to be a special online platform where we keep ninety-three percent of all the donations. And all of that, our goal is to raise thirty-five thousand, and all of that is going to go directly to purchase technology for the classrooms, to have more of a seamless transition, transition between in-school and, uh, home learning next year. Uh, so that is all good, that is going to be a direct ask fundraiser, and all of those funds are going directly towards technology. And then in June, we're hoping to have another round of teacher grants. This will be our third round of teacher grants offered to our Beecher community. And then, of course, we're also working on graduation events, yearbook, et cetera, things to make things special for our sixth graders this year. And that's it. So thank you.
Thanks so much, Maria. As always, you guys are amazing, and we thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is the superintendent's report, Dr. Jonathan Bud.
Sure. Thanks very much, Lynn and everybody. So building on that tremendous news that a hundred percent of available and interested Beecher staff have received their first COVID-19 vaccine dose, we just cannot thank enough every single person who made that possible, including QVHD and the Beecher School nurses. It can't be reiterated enough what a morale booster that is to our staff. I also wish, in a similar vein, to provide an update this evening on confirmed COVID-19 cases in the Beecher Road School community. The, these are the cases on which the Beecher community receives information from me. So for this purpose, a confirmed COVID-19 case in the Beecher Road School community is one in which a member of our community has tested positive for coronavirus, and the individual was in our community on a day when he or she may have been positive. The individual could be a student, a teacher, a staff member, or a bus driver even. Over the course of this school year, we have had eighteen confirmed COVID-19 cases at Beecher. Individuals are identified for contact tracing by the nursing supervisor based on the CDC and CSDE guidelines, applied to case-specific details, when necessary erring on the side of caution, so that quarantine can effectively mitigate community spread. Uh, this aligns with repeated district and school communications for students and staff to stay home when possibly ill. Consolidating all eighteen confirmed cases, there have been three hundred seven quarantines of students this year and forty-eight quarantines of staff members. Remember that a student or staff member may have been quarantined more than once. In the vast majority of the cases, over ninety-five percent, the affected individuals did not ultimately test positive for COVID. In fact, quarantine is, quarantining is one of the key mitigating strategies to reduce the spread. Uh, in nearly all cases, students who were quarantined were able to learn from home, and staff quarantining were able to perform job duties from home unless individual illness impeded that. And remote learning technology allows us to continue the teaching and learning process for students and staff members in quarantine, again, unless an individual is sick and unable to participate in teaching and learning. That is also the case when a student or staff member must quarantine because of an out-of-school exposure, for example, because the individual's parent or spouse has tested positive for COVID-19. On a regular basis, we assess and realign, as necessary, the work assignments of staff in the building, so that all students learning in the building can continue to do so in their cohort groups. Uh, most important, I want to reiterate that individuals who are ill or possibly ill should stay home from school. As always, this is the most important preventative for our school to stay safe and healthy. Next, I remind the community that this Friday is a full professional development day for our teachers, and there is no school for our students. Our teachers will focus on technology integration in the morning and required sexual harassment prevention training in the afternoon. Building on our discussion at last month's board meeting, we have formed a work group to explore expansion of outdoor education at Beecher, to enhance students' physical, emotional, and mental health. This builds on the strength of outdoor education at Beecher for many years, including in our MAG, multi-age group program. New possibilities may include school farm-to-table garden initiatives, structures for outdoor learning, and/or biking as part of physical education. Parents or garden, guardians interested in serving on this work group, please contact me, as some of you already have. We would love to have your participation. In less than one week, spring will be upon us, and as novelist Margaret Atwood said, "In the spring, at the end of the day, you should smell like dirt." We at Beecher are excited to turn from winter to spring, and to the joy and hope that warmer weather will bring us all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Bud. Any, uh, board questions or comments on Dr. Bud's report? Don't, uh, Lore?
I also want to, uh, thank all the nurses and, uh, all the staff members and everybody for, um, doing such a great job in getting, um, the vaccine. I got mine too, so, uh, um, I'm, I'm very pleased that, um, it went so well. And also, I have to give kudos to the town of Woodbridge. Uh, Human Services also i- is doing a great job. So kudos to them also. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Lore. Um, next is the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget presentation. Dr. Bud has some exciting news for us, I think. And so I'll turn over for your report, Dr. Bud.
Yes, and I'm going to share my screen. And board members, this is a, uh, the most up-to-date version of this presentation you received, uh, late last night, uh, and it's been uploaded to e-meeting, so you'd want to refer to one of those sources, please, just a second as I share. Uh, Lynn, could I see a thumbs up? You and Al are again on my screens. Okay, thank you. So, uh, you will remember that back in January, uh, I proposed a budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-two to this Board of Education and, uh, recommended it strongly as the best way that we could educate Beecher students next year. But I mentioned that developing a budget isn't a one-and-done thing, that we are constantly looking, uh, for adjustments that may need to be made. Adjustments could be additions or subtractions. And, uh, I am going to recommend tonight that the board support some recommended adjustments to the proposed operating budget for next school year, and, uh, your approval tonight would allow me to transmit a revised proposed budget to the Board of Finance timely for its meeting later this week. I want to pay special thanks to Mr. Pullo and the rest of the administrative team for continuing to really comb the budget again for things that may have changed since we were at your step with this in January. So you'll remember the timeline that we have here, and the Board of Selectment on February twenty-third approved our proposed budget, but they did so knowing that we were still coming to you this evening with potential adjustments. We actually spoke about most of these adjustments, uh, last week at the Finance Committee, uh, but there is one change since last week, and that's why there's a revised, uh, updated presentation. So, uh, potentially, uh, you would take action to revise this budget after my presentation and after you've asked any questions, and again, we would transmit it to the Board of Finance for their meeting later this week. So the next, we do not have any recommended additions. Uh, that was always a possibility, but we don't see anything that we recommend as an addition. But we do see eight categories that we would recommend as subtractions, and they're listed on this slide in descending order. First, we have received, uh, two resignations of certified staff. Uh, those, uh, staff positions would be filled at a lower salary level than their current, uh, holders have been budgeted for, and so the total savings between those two resignations and their replacements would be forty-two thousand dollars. Second, we have had excellent conversations with our insurance broker, and he feels comfortable with our lowering the anticipated medical insurance premium increase based on updated statistics. We had budgeted for a seventeen percent increase. That can be reduced to fifteen percent, and fifteen percent is actually what the town is building its budget on for insurance as well. Uh, fourteen thousand dollars is through additional anticipated personnel, uh, savings. Uh, thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars, uh, on this slide is referred to as a technical edit, but when we went and looked at the online subscriptions district-wide and the budgets that had previously been compiled, we realized that there was an opportunity to reduce without affecting in any way, uh, student resources or teacher resources. The next three bullets are items in the operating budget that we can legitimately move to the SRTU grant funding. The first is ten thousand five hundred dollars in the building improvements line. Uh, the next one is five thousand dollars in custodial maintenance supplies, and the next is forty-one seventy in nursing supplies. These are all viable, uh, uses of SRTU grant funding, uh, that will relieve strain on this operating budget. And finally, we have identified an additional eleven fifty-five in physical printers and copiers that can be reduced in our building, uh, through some realignment of departments. So the total of those eight bullets together is one hundred thirty thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars, which Mr. Pullo and I feel comfortable in asking, uh, recommending that you subtract from our earlier budget. That would move our budget proposal to fifteen million five hundred sixty-one dollars, six hundred and twenty, and, uh, that would represent a two-point-three-seven percent increase over this year's budget. You will remember back in January that our proposed budget we moved to the Board of Selectmen was a three-point-two-three percent increase. Uh, we concurrently confidently recommend a two-point-three-seven. That is represented on this historical chart here to show the past ten years or so of budget increases, and I continue to thank everybody, including the board, but also town leaders and town residents for their questions. That allows us always to get back into the budget and, uh, make the most informed recommendations to you. So Lynn, I'd be happy to answer your questions, but my recommendation would that the board endorse a, uh, revised proposed budget for next school year.
Thank you, Jonathan. Um, I, I too want to thank you and Mr. Pullo especially, uh, along with the rest of the administrative staff and others who have helped to, um, realize this potential savings for our budget. So at this time, I'll ask if there are any questions or comments from board members on Dr. Bud's presentation. Uh, Mr. Cowan?
So I, I too would like to thank Dr. Bud and Al for all the work and everyone that works that's gone into this. Um, there was two points I wanted to emphasize for anyone who's listening to this meeting. The first one is, um, if we look at the two-point-three-seven in regards to a ten-year rolling average, we'll see that that is nearly exactly the average, um, for the ten years. So, um, although we might have some budget years that are far less than the, than the average, they're almost always followed by an excess spending year. And so I just want to say that I think that that's one of the best metrics to look at to see if you are budgeting well, is to look at the rolling average, and we did achieve that. The other thing is, um, I've been assured by Superintendent Bud and by Mr. Pullo that the twenty thousand dollars roughly that we're funding through SRTU grants will not cause a funding cliff in the future, and that those funds are available to be deducted from other areas should that funding not be available in the future. So I think that those are two very important things to point out to any, uh, Board of Finance members that are listening or, or selectmen that are listening to this conversation.
Thanks, Dan, for that. Uh, any other comments or questions? Uh, Ms. Shavers?
Hi, thank you, Jonathan and Al, for the work that you've done. Um, I'd like to underscore that the, that the hundred thirty thousand in reduction, uh, vis-à-vis where we initially came out at for the request to the town, um, does not result in any reduction in programming and staffing. So I think that that's important for people to understand. And so the work that Al and Jonathan have done, um, seeking efficiencies, both small and big, um, is really just, uh, wonderful work. And sometimes you can't even see, um, the amount of work, um, reaping the benefits, because, uh, in some cases, it's just getting more bang for the buck. And so, uh, there might not be any cost savings, but we're just doing things more efficiently, better. We're actually improving programming. Um, so I just want to make sure that people understand that, that that's what's happening. One thing, um, I mean, I, I always like seeing reductions, uh, but there is one thing, if you, if you don't mind indulging me a little bit, just it's a little bit tangential. But I noticed that we have some departures, or I guess leaves of absence, where, uh, teachers are not going to return, and we are then going to be able to save by hiring at a lower salary level. Um, so I guess I, I would just, um, ask whether we would want to conduct exit interviews, not just for those teachers, but just as a matter of process for any employee that leaves us, because I think that there is an opportunity to learn and, um, to always improve. Uh, we probably have to think about who it is that would conduct the interviews, um, so that it would be done in a confidential and a safe way. But I, I do think that it would be worthwhile learning from these folks that, that leave us.
Dr. Bud?
I, I think it's a very good idea, and I think it's a strong practice in any organization. And these, uh, two particular, uh, resignations or, uh, resignations that I spoke about in the first bullet, uh, are indeed resignations as opposed to leaves of absence. So, uh, I say that because of the comments earlier about potential funding clip in the future. That forty-two thousand dollars is not one that's going to have to be absorbed the next year. I think it's an excellent idea to investigate why. I think it's an excellent idea to investigate why anybody who's leaving is leaving and any comments they might have to make, but I just wanted to clarify that those two particular are are straight resignations.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, I don't see any, so I'm looking for a motion to revise the 2021-2022 proposed Board of Education budget. Ms. Shavers? Do you want to make that motion?
Yeah, so moved.
Okay, moving that we reconcile the 2122 proposed budget as recommended by the superintendent. Do I have a second? Ms. Genovese, thank you. Whoever's the call-in user, could you mute, please? Thank you. All those in favor, I'm going to try it this way. One, two, three. The screen moved, one, two. Laura's your hand up, I can't see. Yep, thank you. Good, I think it's unanimous, Marcia. The motion passes. So we will send off a notice to the Board of Finance tomorrow morning, and I think they will be delighted, and the Board of Selectmen as well should be very happy. I see a little smile on Mrs. Heller's face, so that's all good news for us in town. And I thank the administration for their consideration of every taxpayer, along with every child that goes to this school. So thank you for that. Next, Beecher Road School update. Mrs. Sherman?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to share some updates with you. It's lovely to see you all tonight, chilly on this chilly, very chilly March day. So I want to just put my own plug in for the PTO Book Fair. It is one of my favorite things that we do here, which is saying something because we do so many wonderful things here. So just don't forget to hop online and support our amazing PTO and our teachers by checking out the Scholastic Book Fair. I also want to really celebrate all of our students and our parents and our teachers, our teacher assistants, our office staff, our custodial crew, as well as everybody else that works together to make this year a success. We've made it past day 100. We're really proud about that, and we're moving chug and ride along to day 120, which is what our first graders will be celebrating, and they are actually collecting 120 cans that they are going to be donating, and they're doing a really nice job with that collection and keeping track of their cans on a big 120 chart. So we're really proud of the work that our first grade friends are doing. I also want to mention a couple of other things we that are coming up, actually. We do have a professional development day coming up on Friday. I'm sure we'll be sharing more information with you about that coming soon, and we also have this upcoming week, the Multi-Age Group Informational Night. This is a yearly event where we give parents the opportunity. Traditionally, they get to come into the building. This year, it will once again be a virtual event, but it gives parents the opportunity to learn more about the multi-age program and to ask any questions that they might have. And then we get back together again in a couple of weeks to do another Q and A with them before they have the opportunity to complete an application and participate in a lottery process if needed. We also have a kindergarten orientation coming up, again, virtual, and that will be next week as well. And that is just an opportunity for our littlest learners who will be joining us next year for their parents to learn a little bit about Beecher Road School and get a peek into what a kindergartner will be doing once they join us next year. I also want to mention another event coming up that we're really excited about. We have a special bot day coming up. Many thanks to Mr. Crawford and Ms. Traliglio and our library crew, Ms. Patrick and Ms. Craco, and our steam teacher, who is a sixth-grade teacher, Ms. Ruffimchek. They are organizing a bot day. We did receive a grant last year where we purchased brush bots for every single kid. So we are going to have a really fun day coming up in the beginning of April, and our littlest kids are going to be participating a little bit differently, but our kids in grades two through six will all be making brush bots, which we're super excited about, and I'm sure that we'll be sharing pictures and stories of that as that comes up. And the last thing that I want to mention out, two last things, we have a special spirit day coming up on April 8. We're asking all of our students and staff to wear blue in honor of Autism Awareness Month. And the very last thing I want to share with you is something that we all got to participate in, which is a new yearly event. It started a couple of years ago. Our kindergarten students participated in a super reader parade. Dr. Bud helped to lead the parade. He was wearing a fabulous cape that he made all by himself, which was even more impressive. And we all got to march around and celebrate the amazing readers that our kindergarten students are becoming. They carried wonderful signs that said things like pointer power and perseverance and all the great reading strategies that they are using to become better and better and stronger and stronger readers. So that was a really, really fun day with our youngest learners that just happened last week. I think that's it, unless there's any questions for me.
Thank you, Mrs. Sherman. Ms. Jenofers, do you have a question?
So bot day sounds really exciting. I was wondering, is that something that the remote students can also participate in?
Absolutely, yep. It's going to be for all students in grades two through six, and we're actually, I should have given a really big shout out to Kate Pagnataro. She is the teacher assistant that is putting all the materials that all the kids need in individual little baggies for them so that we can distribute them, and we will be distributing them to all of our remote kids as well. And Mr. Crawford and Ms. Traliglio are making a special slideshow with directions, and we we're going to read a book. It's going to be really lots of fun. So yes, all of our kids will be doing it, K through six.
That's awesome. And then the second request that I have is that I think we need to see a picture of Dr. Bud in his super reader cape.
Oh, for sure. I think I have one, actually. I will I will look for one and share with all of you. He had a really fabulous cape made up of lots of books, so it was it was really awesome. And he had a flag, too, actually.
That's right. Forget my flag.
Oh, Ms. Kiesel has one. It's a little hard to see, Cheryl, but I'm sure we this will be going out on social media, and people will be talking about Dr. Bud.
I again, I again need to give credit where credit is due to Mr. Pullo, who was in my office on Friday and helped. I didn't even know what you call these things, but adjust the garment so I could appropriately tailor it. Well done, Mr. Pullo.
Little did we know, Al, that you had talent in the fashion industry as well.
I could only hope that those photo ops do not end up on social media, however.
Lisa, thank you again for that report. Wonderful things happening, as always, at Beecher Road School, and it's so nice to to hear about them all. So thank you for your report. Any anything else? I don't want to overlook anyone, but I think we might be ready to move on. Good. Upcoming meeting presentation. The upcoming meeting presentation for next month's meeting is technology leasing 2020, 2021, and technology in 2021, 2022. Dr. Bud, do you want to give a little overview or something?
Yes, I'm sorry. Leasing should not have been in the title. It's simply technology at Beecher this year and next year, and the intent was, I mean, I'll put it very simply, technology is a really vital part of what we're doing, what we're using, what we're doing at Beecher, and we have a discussion of it from a teaching and learning perspective on Curriculum Committee this week, and we had a initial leasing conversation about it last week at the Finance Committee. And so from those two perspectives and others, we thought it would be helpful to have some devoted time to present how technology has been integrated at Beecher this past year and what some plans are for next year, and that that would be a very timely topic from a lot of perspectives. Happy to hear people's input on that, but it seemed like a really important issue.
Great, thank you for correcting me for misspeaking. Is there anything that board members specifically want to see in that presentation next month? Anything you're looking for, any information you want included?
I'm always.
Mr. Cowan, go ahead.
I'm always curious about what the staff feels they need to teach more effectively, quickly, and what kind of resources that they could use to do that. I think that's one of the best things we can invest in is things that help staff members accomplish things much faster.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, and I would just piggyback on that and say not only what they could do faster, more efficiently, but also more effectively, which I think is what you're getting at when you talk about technology integration into teaching. But I guess, I guess Dan is to say, let's let's hear from the teachers and make sure that we're incorporating that feedback. Is that right, Dan?
Yeah, yeah, through the superintendent, I just want to make sure that we find out the things that they need, hopefully.
Absolutely, thank you.
Perfect, good suggestions.
Lynn, can I?
Go ahead, Joyce.
It it sounds like a very robust topic that probably will take the full allotted time that we have, but I was wondering at what point could we have the Diversity Committee come, present to us, have a discussion in terms of what we could do more at Beecher Road School?
Are you asking for that for next month, Joyce?
No, I I'm asking.
Okay. Thank you. I think we heard from them last June, so normally committees report on an annual basis, so we can talk about having a report from them in a future meeting. Thank you. So I think you're ready, you're set, Dr. Bud, on what should be in the technology presentation for next month?
Yes, and you'll you'll hear more at the Curriculum Committee this week, actually, also.
Wonderful, thank you. Moving on, 3.4 Facilities Committee Report. Mr. Hughes?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. The Facilities Committee met on March 12. Vito Espara went through his maintenance for the month, keeping the school nice and clean and safe, as always. One big topic of conversation that came up, presented in your e-meeting tonight, is the Beecher Road School energy costs, and we just wanted to highlight through the improvements made through 2012 to 2020, that we're looking at average cost savings of $120,000. That's real, that's real money. Essentially, energy costs have gone down for Beecher Road School, and they're trending in the right direction. We can owe this to the improvements made, the Van Zell report, the lighting replacements. So we're starting to see some real savings into our efforts there. What's not as clearly evident in this report is the hard work and dedication of Al Pullo and Vito Espara. To say they go above and beyond is probably an understatement. They're definitely dedicated employees with their teams and trying to find ways to save some dollars, and it definitely shows. So really good conversation around that topic.
One thing to add on to what Jeff just said, as we're all aware, the cost of energy did not go down, as we all experience our monthly bills at home, but the the spend on utilities at Beecher Road went down even though the costs went up. So that's due to all the excellent work.
Thanks, Dan. Yeah, that's absolutely correct. To get energy costs to trend down naturally is nearly impossible, so these are definitely due to all the upgrades that Beecher Road has been accomplished.
Thank you, Jeff, for that, and Dan as well for your added comments. Again, really good news for us to celebrate at Beecher Road School and to share with the greater community. I'm sure the Board of the Town Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen will be happy to hear this news as well. So good things tonight, and Beth's giving us thumbs up for that. Joyce?
Jeff, do you, do we have a sense of how much of the savings is due to the Van Zell project versus our own projects that we have initiated?
The Van Zell was done in 2019, so we don't have a clear breakdown of specifically that. We just have energy costs year over year since 2012. I'm wondering if Al could dig a little deeper, if we could just get a breakout of 2019 for the Van Zell, but there's definitely some cost savings there, and they're trending in the right direction, so I would assume it has a positive impact.
And I would say also, one thing to keep consideration with Van Zell is Van Zell also addressed IEQ concerns in the school as well, improved indoor air quality concerns, not just energy efficiency. So it's not a clear saying like, well, Van Zell costs this much and they yielded this much. They were addressing a much larger problem that was not energy related, but safety.
That's a great question, Joyce, because it opens up the conversation. Like Dan said, we're just talking strictly energy costs, but what these upgrades have done for the environment, sustainability, and air quality is tremendous, and that's not captured in the chart. So again, all positives all around.
Thanks for that, Jeff, appreciate it. Al, do you have a?
Yeah.
Little something to add?
Yes, if I may. First thing is is just to quantify, I know when I invest, I always look for what's my ROI, what's my return on that money? And and just for the audience and the taxpayers at large, a reminder, the building upgrade project was a $13 million, $13.3 million cost, of which the town received just a little under $3.1 million in state reimbursements, and then you factor in various energy and utility rebates, brought that a little further down to a net investment to the town of about $10 million. And again, just looking at a very gross comparison of what we were paying for heating and lighting and air conditioning in the base year 2012 to our most recent year of Measure 2020, that ROI over the eight years returned a total of $120,000, so about a $15,000 on average return, which I think is a pretty respectable earning on on that investment. Beecher is an old building, the original construction era, A, B, and C wing, which is why that area was the focus of the building upgrade. That's a 1960s construction era building, so it was bringing that up to today's standards. So there definitely was a return on the investment. Joyce, to your question, I I'm sure there is a potential calculation, but I wonder if we might have a little bit too wide of a variable to really pare down and identify how much was lighting upgrade, how much was HVAC upgrade. But a reminder for everyone that the board did vote to do in the current year, which makes the third of as many years, the measurement and verification analysis, which is where those foundational conversions happen, and energy metrics, degree days, and cost per cubic foot of natural gas, etc., all of those variables are hunkered in, again, from an external consultant's goal to to prove indeed savings were achieved. So there is there is measurement, there is analysis going on, and again, this is the third year of that, but if you just look at the gross numbers, what we were paying in 2012, what we're paying in 2020, and a real important keynote is the building is fully air conditioning. We've done away with the window units, we've done away with the modified internal units. It's a standardized central air system, if you will, so there's energy efficiency embedded in that as well.
Thanks, Al, that that's helpful. I think the ROI perspective, as well as with the M and V report was what sort of inspired was what sort of inspired the question, because we had been talking about some of our own efforts that contributed to the energy savings. So to the extent that we should get credit, I was just wondering, is that factored in? And I think the answer is, it's a little bit messy, isn't it?
But that's truly the ideal and the accurate answer. There, there's a lot of hands in the pot. The good news is, we're making a good dish of soup, but there are a lot of variables that are influencing a favorable outcome.
I'd like to make one final comment on this, too. You know, one, one of the major things that Van Zell did was reduce the amount of fresh air that we were going to bring into the school. However, with coronavirus, a decision was made that we were not gonna do that. And so we were gonna ventilate the school to what was required for safe occupancy. So some of the savings that would have been yielded from the Van Zell recommendations were turned off as, you know, so that we could ventilate the school properly. So I think that that's a key thing to keep in mind, that we still yielded savings because we have such a high-performance system while quote, quote, "over-ventilating" the building for the safety of the staff and children, so.
Thanks, Dan, for that info, and Al, thank you for your explanation. I think that was helpful for all of us. So appreciate that. Anything else, Jeff, from Facilities?
Just keep our fingers crossed for no more snow.
I know, I heard the weather report tonight. Oh. Let's hope it melts fast, if it comes. Just a reminder to Board meetings that our next meeting of the Facilities Committee will be Friday, April 9th at 7:30 a.m. Thanks, Jeff, for your report. Moving on to the Finance Committee Report, Ms. Shavers.
Okay, so our proposed operating budget deficit is around $34,000 right now. And that is cut roughly in half from last month, largely due to the fact that we are getting close to the end of the year, and, which is hard to believe, but, and we're able to release encumbrances. Al is cautiously optimistic that we'll be able to eliminate the operating deficit, operating budget deficit, and maybe even end up in the black. So that's all really, really great news. The school lunch program, year-to-date, the net loss is 20,000. The, the thing to focus on for this is that even though the cafeteria has its own fund balance, there are restrictions on what that can be spent on, namely capital purchases. So at the end of the day, it's the BOE that needs to be ultimately responsible to cover that expense. But that is currently now in the operating budget deficit of 34,000. The extended day program is running an operating loss of about 80,000, and the current fund balance is 31,000. So it's getting whittled down, but Al is, again, cautiously optimistic that this amount will cover the expenses, namely the unemployment claims, until the end of June. So we may be able to be okay on that front. Jonathan had touched on the SRT2 funding, as you all recall. That, that's about roughly $200,000 for us. And the intent of that funding is really to help with COVID-related costs, like special supplies or addressing learning loss as a result of COVID or social, emotional needs, things like that. Now, as Jonathan had mentioned, we were able to apply 20,000 of the SRT2 funds to our operating budget, thereby reducing our operating budget for next year request down a little bit, 20,000, to be exact. Jonathan already talked about next year's operating budget. And then there's the American Rescue Act. Jonathan, do you want to speak about it? Or do you want me to just give a brief update? I didn't know later on you had, you were gonna mention something about it, but this is really fantastic news.
It's fantastic news, and I'll support whatever you say about it, but I don't have any more details from the state to share, unfortunately.
Okay, so just by way of background, the American Rescue Act that was just signed will give us roughly a half a million dollars to Woodbridge. And so that is an enormous amount of money. That money needs to be used for COVID-related expenses, having to do with technology, infrastructure, building improvements, things like that. And so as we get more detail around what's going to be required to apply these funds, it's probably going to be quite stringent. We'll know how much of those funds can be applied to our capital budget request. But right now, we're still trying to get a handle on the details and the timeline that we need to use these funds by. But this is fantastic news. That's a lot of money, and it's gonna help Beecher Road School quite a bit. That's it for me.
Thank you, Joyce. Any questions or comments on the Finance Committee Report? I don't see any, so I will just ask Board members to note that the date for the next scheduled meeting has been changed due to school vacation. So anyone interested in attending the April Finance Committee Report, it's scheduled, April Finance Committee Meeting, it's scheduled for Thursday, April 8th at 6:30 p.m. Thank you. Curriculum Committee Report, Dr. Strampler.
Okay, so we don't have any updates since our last Board meeting. Our last meeting was on the 18th of February, and I reported the update from that at our last regular Board meeting on the 22nd. So our next meeting is scheduled for this Thursday at 4:30. And we'll be focusing on SRT2-related topics associated with learning loss and use of technology to support learning.
Great, thank you. So anyone interested in attending that meeting? That will be Thursday at 4:30. Policy Committee, Ms. Genovese.
Thanks, Lynn. I guess I would like to start. I would like to move that we adopt Policy 4131, Professional Development. That was a policy we put on for 30-day review last month.
Lynn, yeah, you'll have to unmute.
Thank you so much, because I'm just rambling on here in my little room. We have a motion to approve the adoption of Policy 4131. Do I have a second? Mr. Dr. Townsend, I see you raised your hand. Thank you. Any discussion? Megan, do you have anything you want to say about that? That, that is a professional development policy. Do you have anything you want to add, Megan?
Oh, no, I didn't have anything off the top of my head. We had reviewed it previously and had put it up last month. So if anyone has any questions, let us know, but I think it was pretty, it was pretty straightforward, and Dr. Bud spoke to it at the last session that we had.
Yep. Any Board questions or discussion prior to taking the vote? Okay, we're gonna try it this way. All those in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? It looks like it's unanimous, Marsha. Policy 4131, Professional Development passes. Anything else, Megan, from Policy Committee?
Sure, I can, I can give a quick update. I mean, we met last two, not last Tuesday, we met on Tuesday, March 9th. I guess that was last Tuesday. And we reviewed the three policies that we discussed earlier in this meeting that were approved for, on the consent agenda for 30-day review. Just revisit quickly, that was 2131, Superintendent of Schools, which we will be revisiting in Policy Committee right away. And then we're also 2111, Equal Employment Opportunities, and 4118.112, Sexual harassment. So we reviewed all of those with discussion, and I'm trying to think, I guess our next meeting is, was also changed, actually. Just to be clear, we did have it scheduled originally during spring break as well, and we rescheduled for Tuesday, April 6th at 8:00 a.m.
Great, thank you. Any questions of Megan on Policy Committee? Thanks, Megan. Moving on, back to you, Megan. Cave Liaison Report?
Sure. So we have a few things coming up for Professional Development Opportunities for Board members. The first, I, I did speak to this last month as well, but just a little reminder that the Cave Virtual Day on the Hill is this Wednesday, March 17th, so it's not too late. I believe it's not too late to register to do that, and it's from 9:00 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. for that program, which is, again, is kind of nice, because it's usually an all-day thing, or at least an all-morning thing up in Hartford. So it ends up being a kind of an all-day thing, so it's nice to have it this way this year, so I'm looking forward to that. Other opportunities coming up soon are for Professional Development for Board members is Education Committee Bills is another seminar that they're having. That's on April 6th from 11:00 a.m. to 12:15 p.m. The Appropriations Committee Budget is on Monday, 26th from 11:00 a.m. to 12:15. And the Legislative Report, let's see, subtitled, "What Happened and What Are the Implications for Your School District", that is Monday, June 14th from 11:00 a.m. to 12:15 p.m. And all Board members should have received more information on those, but if you haven't, for some reason, let me know, and I can forward you some more information, some more details on that, and if interested to register. One other piece that they, that I was looking at was the NSBA, so the National School, School Boards Association. Their 2021 conference is coming up. It will be online, also available for Board of Education members. It's kind of an interesting opportunity to get together. It's actually like a three-day event, so I'm not 100% sure if you can go to part of it. I was under the impression it was an all-or-nothing kind of thing, but it's a Thursday, Friday, Saturday opportunity. But it looks like they're, it, it's, it's a little bit pricier, but they have a two-for-one sale right now, so I don't know if there's two Board members that are interested that one of you can go for free. But again, if you're interested, let me know. I can forward you more information if you didn't receive an email on that. But if interested, we do need to connect with Marsha to make sure funding is available, just wanted to be sure, because this is, yeah, that's an important piece, though. That's about it. I guess just a quick reminder is there's always COVID-19 resources on the Cave website. I probably sound like a broken record, because I think I might say that every other month now, but that is continually being updated on their website, and that's it.
Thanks, Megan. Great. Number four on our agenda is new business. Annually, the Board is required to vote on motions related to aspects of the healthy food certification. Dr. Bud has outlined the necessary actions in tonight's Board Packet for Board Members. Dr. Bud, Bud, do you have anything else you would like to add this evening?
Yeah, listen carefully on this one. It is three motions. One relates to the year we're already in, and the next two relate to next school year. So I outlined this in a memorandum, because the State Department of Education got in touch with us related to our minutes from the February 24th, 2020 Board Meeting. Every year, the Board must vote on two different motions. And despite what may have been your intent back last February, you only voted on one of the motions. So as a result, our grant funding is just held up a little bit until we do the other motion correctly that related to last school year. And that motion relates to all the food and beverages that we sell during the day being compliant with the nutrition standards. After that motion, what you see on the agenda is the same motion for the next school year, as well as the other motion for the next school year, which is the one you did correctly for this school year, which relates to exemptions that are allowed for foods and beverages if they are outside of the school day, et cetera, but on our grounds. The wording must be precisely done, otherwise we will have it returned to us for that reason as well, I'm sad to say. So with some resolution interested, interest on my end, I turn it back to you, Lynn.
Well, thank you, Jonathan. So just to remind Board members, the, the language of the motion is very specific. So Joyce, do you have the language for the motion?
I'm sorry, Lynn, I don't, but I, do you want me to pull it up?
I have it.
Okay, so Dan has it. Let's let Dan read it so that it's correct on our recorded meeting, and then it will be correctly put into the minutes, and the state will be happy with us. So we're gonna start, Dan, with action on the 2020-2021 healthy food participation.
Just to clarify something before I start reading it, is that 10215F?
Yes.
Yes.
Pursuant Connecticut General Statute, Section 10215F, the Woodbridge Board of Education certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in Beecher Road School and not exempt from this Connecticut nutritional standard published by Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with Connecticut nutritional standards during the period of July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. This certification shall include all foods offered for sale to students separately from the reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups.
Thank you. And do we have a second?
Our policies are complicated, everybody.
Ms. Shavers, seconds, okay? All those in favor of that specific motion?
Unanimous.
It is unanimous, Marsha. We can tell the state, we have unanimously voted on that food certification participation for this year. Now, Dan, unfortunately, you have to read that motion again for the 2021-2022 school year.
So I move for the healthy foods participation 2021-2022 school year, pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 10215F. The Woodbridge Board of Education certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in Beecher Road School and not exempt from the Connecticut nutritional standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with Connecticut nutritional standards during the period of July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. The certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by school or non-school organizations and/or groups.
Good. And do we have a second? Ms. Genovese, seconds. All those in favor of that specific motion for the 2021-2022 school year? Unanimous.
All right.
Okay.
Final one, right?
The last one we need to vote on is for 2021-2022 school year, food and beverage exemption. You're on, Mr. Cowan.
So food and beverage exemption for 2021-2022, right? The Woodbridge Board of Education will allow the sale of students, to students, of food items that do not meet the Connecticut nutritional that do not meet the Connecticut nutritional standards and beverages not listed in Section 10221Q of the Connecticut General Statute, provided that the following conditions are met. The sale is connected with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day and/or on a weekend. The sale is at the location of the event, and the food and beverages items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regular scheduled practice or meeting or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, and interscholastic debates are events, but soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. The regular school, the regular school day is a period from midnight before, period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held.
Thank you for qualifying all of that. Do I have a second? Ms. Shaver's seconds. All those in favor of that specific motion? Any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous, Marcia. Okay, I think we are now have followed all the rules of the law in the state of Connecticut on foods for the moment. Great. Thank you for that. Go ahead, Dan.
I need some help from somebody who understands how to do this properly. But I have a new business item, and I don't know how to put it out there. So I waited till now. Do I just ask Marcia to add it to the agenda? You to add it to the agenda for new business?
Marcia, can you help me with that?
I believe you'd have to have two-thirds of a vote from the board to add it.
Okay, I think you're right, Dr. Bud.
So can I make a motion and then ask for the two-thirds or something like that?
I believe that so. You can, do we?
Yeah.
I think you just ask to have it. I don't think it needs to be a motion. Is that correct, Marcia?
What does he want to have added?
So I would like to have the Policy Committee look at our quarantining policies and our masking policies. And so I'd like the board to request that of the Policy Committee. The governor has made changes. The CDC has made changes. And our policies are not flexible in their wording. We don't have any sunsetting dates and things like that. So I think that it's work that the Policy Committee should do. I understand that we're in a level plateau right now after we had a significant decrease in transparency. But now is a good time to talk about how we deal with these policies since there is no dependence.
Yeah, Lynn, you'd have to have a, on the topic, the topic of that, you'd have to have a second and then a two-thirds vote to add it to the agenda for discussion purposes tonight.
Okay.
May I just ask a question?
Yes.
Is it possible to put this item on the agenda for the next time? Since it's 8:36 and it's been a long evening.
So I'm not looking for a discussion tonight. I'm just looking for the Policy Committee to discuss it at their next meeting. So that's all I'm asking for is this board to ask the Policy Committee to look at that policy. That's the only thing.
Dan, you're asking, I believe, for a vote of the board tonight to direct the, so the board could add an item under new business with a second and then a two-thirds vote to add it and then could vote accordingly. But it would be a first, it is a regular meeting, so it's a two-thirds vote. First, you'd have a second plan on adding.
Right. So Dan, are you asking to add to the agenda a discussion on work that the Policy Committee would do?
Yes.
Okay, so why don't you make that motion?
So I move that the Board of Education adds to the agenda in new business, a discussion item about the policy for quarantining and masking of students and staff.
Good. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Hughes is seconding that. Okay. Is there any discussion of the motion before the vote?
So I don't have those policies in front of me, so I can't speak to them off the top of my head. It's been a while. But I believe we did say when the governor changed the regulations and whatnot, that those policies become obsolete, that they are not policies anymore, essentially.
Lynn, just to clarify, just to clarify, the discussion would just be on adding it to the agenda. Then if it's added to the agenda, there would be a separate discussion on the actual item. So.
Right. On adding that to the agenda. Yes.
Okay, I'm somewhat confused. Is he adding it to the agenda tonight to be discussed? Or is he adding it because he wants it to be discussed at policy?
So the motion he's making is to have work for the policy, the work of the Policy Committee added to the agenda this evening. Is that correct, Mr. Cowan?
Right. So we need to discuss that before we vote on whether we're going to mandate the Policy Committee to do that at the next meeting.
That's a separate motion.
Discussing whether to add it to the agenda tonight. Yes.
It's just, are we going to get there?
Right.
So the first is, can we add to the agenda? That is the motion that's on the table. Okay? So I'm going to call the roll. Mike, do you want that added to the agenda?
I had something else I wanted to mention and discussion of this, of adding it to the agenda.
Okay.
Before we vote. So I guess I'm a little bit confused of why we would direct the committee to do that when the committee themselves can make that decision.
Exactly. Doesn't belong at the board level.
Okay. Mike, I understand your question, but I think that question is for...
Yes.
Whoever it's for.
When we get to the next motion.
What's that?
I think that question is for when we get to the next motion, which is directing the Policy Committee. Right now, we just are voting on, are we adding a discussion of policy work to the agenda? It's very confusing, I know.
Yeah, for the next meeting then or for this meeting?
For this meeting.
Are we adding a discussion about whether we should direct the? Okay.
So this next vote is simply on whether we're going to add the topic to tonight's agenda for discussion purposes. And if you vote yes on that, then it would go on the agenda and could be, can be discussed. If you vote no, then it won't be discussed tonight.
Okay, then my vote is no.
Okay. So hang on. Jeff Townsend, before you vote, Jeff Townsend, did you have a question or comment on the motion of adding something to the agenda?
Yeah, my comment on the motion to add something to the agenda is just that I do believe that the Policy Committee is establishing a good agenda for its own meetings right now. And so I will not vote to add a discussion of the policy meeting's agenda to our current agenda for today's meeting.
Okay.
As a advice to others.
Mike Strampler, you're voting no for it to be added to the agenda?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Megan?
So I guess, sorry, I'm a little torn about this because on one hand, I'm happy to review those policies and discuss if we want to discuss them in policy. But I agree, I don't think we need to have that full-blown conversation here. I think we can do that in policy. And Dan, I'm very happy to talk to you about any particular things that you have in mind that you would like modify on those. And then if so, then I will go back and talk to Dr. Bud about that. That's my thought in it. So yeah, I agree.
So are you voting no?
I'm voting, I'm voting no. I don't think it's appropriate to talk tonight.
Okay, Lore? Lore, I can hear you through the wall, but I think you're on mute. Thank you. That's okay. Joyce? Jeff Townsend?
I vote no to adding it.
Jeff Hughes?
I guess one thing we learned about COVID is ever-evolving, rapidly changing. So I have no problem adding it to agenda tonight. So yes.
David Ross?
No.
Dan? Thank you. And I would vote yes to add it to the agenda, but two-thirds, it doesn't carry. So it will not be added to the agenda this evening. It does sound as though, Dan, that the chairman of the Policy Committee would be happy to talk to you, though.
Absolutely.
I'll reach out.
Thank you. Um, okay. I think we're ready to move on to part of new business as well, 4.4, which is accept certified staff resignations. Dr. Bud?
Yes, and the board has two letters in its materials for tonight. And although I haven't had the privilege of working with either of these teachers as they've both been on leave this school year, I've heard numerous compliments from our community about their excellence at Inbeecher. Nicole Chick has served Inbeecher as a primary grades teacher, mainly in kindergarten, dating back to the 2007-08 school year. Nicole is very well-regarded for focusing on the social and emotional growth of her students, who I am told would spread kindness across the entire school. And Nicole Rizzo started at Inbeecher as an intern and became a grade-two teacher in 2014-15. And she, like Nicole Chick, eventually became a team leader for her grade level. I am told that Nicole Rizzo's calming presence allowed her to meet students at their own unique levels, knowing what each child needed and giving it to that child. Both individuals have resigned their employment at Inbeecher to pursue other paths. And regretfully, Ms. Piazek, I must ask that the board accept their resignations.
Dr. Bud, thank you for that. On a personal note, these two wonderful women have been my colleagues. And Nicole taught first grade with me as a first-grade teacher when she first came to Inbeecher, was part of my team. And we have a very special relationship. So I only can wish her the best in her new endeavors. And Nicole Rizzo, I remember when she arrived, my last year of teaching as an intern. And we worked side by side as she came and learned about teaching and how happy I was to offer a letter of reference to her as a permanent teacher here at Inbeecher Road School. So I was delighted when she was hired for that position. So it is bittersweet for me to see them move on to other opportunities in education. And I think that the students who benefited from their loving hands as educators are just so lucky. So I'm going to, you know, when these things happen, and these were my colleagues, I get all for clamped. So you have to forgive me for that. I'm looking for a motion to accept the resignations of Nicole Chick and Nicole Rizzo effective June 30, 2021, certainly with the utmost regret. Do I have that motion? Lore has made that motion. Do I have a second? Megan Genovese. Is there any further discussion or comments prior to us voting? Okay, board members, all those in favor? Opposed? I mean, I'd like to oppose, but abstentions? The motion carries. Nicole, Nicole, I love you guys. And thank you very much for all that you've done, not only for the kids, but for the Inbeecher community as a whole. The, your sharing of your knowledge and your love for education with the staff is also notable. So thank you for that. And I hope that there will be an opportunity for me to see you in person and to have, to be vaccinated so I can hug you. Thanks. All right. Other public comment? Do we see anyone with their hand raised for public comment? I don't. Marcia, do you see any hands raised?
I see none.
Thank you, Dan. 5.2 is executive session. Purpose of this executive session will be to discuss a certified leave request and the superintendent's evaluation. I will need a motion to move into executive session with an invitation extended to Dr. Bud to join the board. Lore made that motion. Jeff Townsend, I saw your hand as well, seconding it. I'm going to, before we take the vote board, I'm going to, just for public information, there may be action that is taken when the board reconvenes and returns to public session following the executive session, just for informational purposes. Okay, all those in favor, board members, of moving into executive session? Thank you. Board members, take three minutes, and then we'll see you on...
Separately, separately.